All right, well, since Greg is out of town, so we're excited, we hope, to run the show tonight. So I'd like to call me to order at 6:32. You know who is coming in comments? Is Davis?
Yes, can you hear me comments? Nothing was there.
Great, there being none. The CSA presidents are not coming tonight. They would like to come in November. I hope we can move to their reports.
Good evening. Since our last school committee meeting, we've been due to have a lot of activity around high school. Special activities events and professional development highlighting with you and the bullets provided. I wanted to speak to an update on the science, technology, engineering investment that was made through the professional development efforts of the school system and some budget allocation through the school committee budget process. In addition to an update on the status of our last warning which at the elementary school level, AKA Spanish program. So in communication with that, we thought this would be a good time here to provide an update to the elementary school committees. So science, technology, engineering. I have spoken at several recent school committees about the professional development efforts going on behind the scenes as we had Chikrin at High Hill Elementary School online our K-5 science program in the life sciences, physical sciences, and earth sciences to the new state standards. We've had a lot of quality time doing that and that work will continue through this school year. From a budgetary standpoint, the school committee was supportive and funded the $12,000 that we requested in this current year budget cycle. Our hope was to acquire a life, physical, or earth one science unit kit per grade level in coordination with our sister school. So lots of inquiry, lots of research, meeting with vendors, et cetera, pointing into the behind the scenes research. We were able to almost actualize our goal. We were able to afford two science kits per grade level where there are three or four sections per grade level. So this year, our classroom teachers will be sharing resources, which means they won't be teaching the same life science, physical science, or earth science units at the same time. Our ultimate goal is to make each classroom whole with the materials so that coordination and implementation is coordinated across the grade level. Our reading and writing, the driving units, turn into science and social studies and that coordinated effort is the big picture goal. So this year, again, we'll troubleshoot, we'll be flexible, and all students will have the benefit now of two new science units. One, we home grew, we developed on our own and acquired resources for that. The other, we purchased. By the end of this school year, we'll have a recommendation, again, from both elementary schools, whether grade levels will likely want to purchase the third and final science unit moving into next year or write our own. It really depends on the topic. Some kids, for example, some kids are more conducive to teaching through an acquired kit that has all of the resources and assessments built in, technology connections. And others, we feel we can do a well enough job dividing them. So we wanted to update you on the status of how the science units were expanded and we're really excited. Each of the science units, whether they're on one or two or kit based, will have a consumable replacement cost to them that's already built into our budget. We always had science consumables, no matter what topics we were teaching. So I just wanted to be clear that we wouldn't be asking for consumable replacement funding, just the initial material setting. Any questions about science before I move back to Spanish? Okay. In Spanish, we had, we increased our Spanish teaching personnel by 0.3 this year so that our fourth grade could have the cohort of students that has now moved to fourth grade has Spanish as part of their weekly overall program. Last year, we shared a part-time person with Chikrin. That person didn't return to either of our districts. So we are continuing to have science taught through our full-time Signora Bridge. What did I say? Science, really? Thank you for following my intent and not my word. And this year, we had the pleasure of hiring a part-time, half-time Spanish teacher in Signora Bridge. So we have a full-time teacher and a half-time teacher. Currently, Witty teaches kindergarten and first grade, and Signora Bridge teaches second grade and fourth grade. As we develop our budget requests for next year, we obviously will be looking for an increased allocation proportionate to implementing Spanish in the fifth grade curriculum, and then we will have a total implementation. John helped us actualize a line item in the budget specific to Spanish materials, which was helpful. We were partying rants and finding other funding sources. So now there's a designated materials cost for Spanish. Something else that we were able to do this year through some room reassignment was to designate an instructional space for Tommy Bridge for the second, third, and fourth grade Spanish classes. And I struggled with that because the philosophy is that Spanish takes place in the classroom and all the artifacts that children have at their noses for math, science, reading, writing, social studies, et cetera, are inherent and built in, integrated in the Spanish lessons. The reality was, given time, 21 classes transitioning, the Spanish teacher transitioning across three grade levels was cutting into a lot of instructional time. And technology, setting up technology in each classroom every 30 minutes was, we were willing to make that trade up when we looked at how much time we spent transitioning versus engaging students in Spanish. So we're excited to have a designated Spanish space for second, third, and fourth grade that's available this year. We never know what's to come depending on our involvement and other other kinds of needs that pop up, but for this year, that's working well. I gave an overview. It's been a handful of years since Spanish Department has done a presentation to the school committee. So I just wanted to refresh your memory. Spanish is a subject that is graded and reported on through our report card system and be a little more friendly information there. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to talk in more detail, but we know we always have busy agendas.
If we just maybe we can table this to a later budget relevant discussion. What do you anticipate the additional need for class next year? So a 4.5 now, with another 0.3, 0.2?
We're looking at a minimum of 0.3 and a maximum of 0.5. And that will come through our conversations, whether we want to cover the teaching time. A 0.3 would be minimum to cover the classes. At this time, our second Spanish teacher does not have curriculum development or planning time with the other Spanish teachers in this building and across the district, the one state related structure, for example, where the department does a lot of planning. So a maximum would be 0.5, which would allow full collaboration with acting as a Spanish department. And I'm assuming we'll figure out what's our current reality versus our desired state. But somewhere between 0.4 and 0.5.
I just had a question about the Pine Hill Hoppings. The screening, kindergarten screening, was that for next year? Or is that just going on going?
Thank you for asking that. We, when some of you had, probably all of you, it's definitely a bit of a struggle that what was and what is. In the past, kindergarten teachers and support staff conducted our required by state child on the screenings of incoming kindergarten students as part of the registration process. We were meeting kids in April, May, June, and there were pros and cons to that. The last couple of years, we have shaped the kindergarten team, and I have shaped how we meet students, how we conduct parents, how we conduct students to kindergarten. And we made the decision that we wanted our first meeting greet with our sometimes four and a half year old kids to be more playful, more exposure to the kindergarten experience as opposed to looking at prior work, your parents, and now like give you some mind and screaming kinds of tasks. Some of our students who were shy or reticent to participate didn't do well on the screen. So that was not a reflection of their ability to process the ritual or motor tasks. So we shifted, we now meet students from more of a classroom visit in the spring, obviously informational sessions for parents as we're going through the registration process to school. And we put off that child fine screening to the early days, the first month of the school year. It still meets our state regulation to screen children by October 1st or October 31st. The deadline is somewhere in there. It allows someone who has a relationship with the child to conduct this screening. Where before it was, again, welcome to Pine Hill School, you're coming with me, you're going with the sons, and you're going with the children, say the audio members. So in order to do that, we're providing some internal coverage so teachers can have a day, two days, and they're able to conduct the students in the context of all of the early academic and social benchmarks that we assess for us part of the beginning of this school year. So we're making it more gentle, more natural. And what I hope is kinder and gentler for students, but also more informative, more informative for the classroom teachers, focusing their students in language, motor, cognition, and other tasks. So you can say the same screen ritual?
Yeah.
So allows my report, Dr. Brown's review office, which Dr. Brown is very thorough and giving an update about science at the elementary level. So science is in year two, continuing to build on their third units, and look forward to the resources that were provided. English is in year one. So the elementary teachers at Pine Hill are going to be working with teachers for teachers again, consultants they've been working with and developing relationships for years to go back and revisit their curriculum maps and make sure they're up to date in terms of what their expectations are for students to do, know, and do in both reading and writing. So there'll be a look at the consistency within a grade and then the vertical line across grades in English this year with the leadership of Dr. Brown and the consultants. That's English, other updates. The class program, again, Dr. Brown covered the majority of it. We have a kind of K through 12 Spanish mini-meeting on October 11th. So Dr. Brown, Ms. Dial, the class teachers will be meeting with Hallie Egan from the middle school, and Jeff Harris from the high school, and myself next week.
Is that tomorrow? Tomorrow?
And just to start planning for grade six and what that's going to look like and what do we need to learn about our fourth graders, to these fifth graders in order to prepare the sixth grade program accordingly. And the exciting thing is that the nation is going to be towards efficiency-based curriculum, which means instead of just opening up a Spanish textbook and doing chapter one, chapter two, chapter three, it's finding the kids where they're at in terms of reading, writing, listening. So we'll be able to know that the students moving up to the sixth grade, obviously, are going to be more advanced in the speaking and listening, meet them there and support the reading and writing. The Metcalfe program, we had a wonderful outing on actually September 28th. Most of the leadership team, majority of them, were able to go out to Boston, meet some of our Boston families. And we had a great time, we did introductions, we talked about, you know, are doing some pushes for all of the students at Dover Sherborn, and we talked about how we can strengthen the relationship with our Boston parents to make them feel more included in the conversation and kindergarten. And lastly, I have an update. It appears that October 16th is approximately when we'll be hearing some sort of results. And it will obviously be made available to the district first just to refer regularities and get some sort of messaging and consensus, and then it'll become public. So we'll have some information for you later in the month. Definitely, if ever we can share some details.
All right. Special education report.
I've provided a report in the packet regarding some updates specifically around circuit breaker and the funding universal. The programs that we saw expansion in are at the, we've seen the language-based program expanded at the high school to include a full-time teacher at the high school. The life skills program at the high school also expanded. You see a note there about the strategic learning center at Chikrin, which we've expanded a little, tiny bit to include capturing our younger students for that strategic learning program. Our integrated preschools that both Dover and Sherborn are beginning to function more and more similar to each other in terms of the structure around what happens. For the first time, we have a person acting as the preschool coordinator. So Mary Clardy is the team chair at Chikrin, and she put two of her jobs to build some alignment between the two preschools and to really act as the preschool coordinator. There are a lot of indicators and demands from the state that are different than any other area in the building. So I'm thrilled to say that both of our elementary schools, I think both see themselves as now as a pre-K and I building, which is really exciting. The leadership between Laura and Barbara has been fantastic. We worked really hard last year to bring some alignment, and I know that Mary Clardy, the new team chair, is finding that things are already along, farther along than she would have thought. So that's exciting. And we are, we are running two full-day classes here and one and a half classes at Chikrin. I then included information about our professional development. So the special education staff will get together on some of the half-day Wednesdays to begin to dive deeper in understanding our eligibility categories, our how we find students eligible, what testing we're using to find students eligible, and then what service we're providing for students, and looking at that as a continual or service. So that's the response of our CPR work that was done last year with the state came in and took a look at our buildings and gave us some feedback. I think that we're doing really well, and I continue to be so pleased with the work of all of our teachers and service providers. But I do think that we both continue to learn from data, continue to learn from trends, and look deeply at students' progress over time to see how we are providing those. So I provided a graph there. It gives you some information about the numbers of students that are eligible for special education in this building. That's the total number at the bottom. And then each eligibility category that we use in special education that the state is so sanctioned as areas that students can qualify. So you see that students at Pine Hill, we have about 20 students that qualify for special education under development at the red. And then you see that there's none at the middle school or the high school because those students age out of that eligibility category enough. So that's why there's none at the other.
Are these unique individuals or are main individuals following the categorize of the need, maybe show up more than one?
Sure, that's a great question. So we do, in special education, talk about primary eligibility category and secondary, and sometimes even tertiary, but we only capture first.
And then includes the preschool?
And it doesn't include our preschool grades, yeah.
Right.
So on average, we have about nine students per grade eligible for special education, if that doesn't tell you. So in truth, if you're looking at real bodies, I would say some grades are sick and some grades are high as well, but on average, it's about nine students per grade. And then I included a new chart for our out of district information. So I was talking with our leadership. We wanted to protect the confidentiality of our students, but yet share some information still. So I'm hoping that this type of information gives you enough information, but yet doesn't reveal too much, obviously, to protect the confidentiality of our students. So it's interesting to look at the Sherborn graph is the roller graph, and then the projected budget is what we created in February. When we projected that, we thought we would have six students in Massachusetts private approved schools and two residential private approved. And as you see today, we don't have that. We have seven in day programs with one in residential. And then you'll see some changes in some of the other numbers. We did have some movement over the summer, some interesting attrition that's not captured in there because you don't see the names. I toyed with the idea of like giving the kids letter assignments so we could sort of see where they're really going, if that would be important. But, you know, as always, I'm taking to conversation that's appropriate for non-student specific information, but if it helps to understand what's happening for our students. And a little description on the back page tells you what each of those categories mean because in my world, they really, they make sense, but I don't know that they make sense to anybody else, really. Helps you understand that, you know, Massachusetts publicly, you know, we do have students placed in other districts as well as in the upper quadrant, and so on. Lastly, I just wanted to mention that Sherborn will be audited in, unfortunate for Donald and I, Sherborn will be audited in a fiscal audit of our special education fund, 274 and 274, 240. Yeah, it's 234 grants that are specific to special education. And then there'll be a separate audit regarding our circuit breaker filing, which I'm unsure from the state is not because we are claiming more money, it's simply because it's been around six years since we've been audited. How do we handle it?
What's the timeframe, certainly to the last, I think, four to five months, couple weeks?
So we should be in touch with the state. We're waiting to hear from them to set the date for the circuit breaker audit, which probably will happen in November, early November. And we have a date set already for the fiscal audit, which will be at the end of November of 2021.
Do we have to take the dates for the audits?
They said we can contact this week, right?
Correct. Contact to set the date for the circuit breaker audit.
They think budget period on purpose?
When is it not budget period? For either closing books, opening books, or scrutinizing books, right? It's always, that's always a good time.
Do I have any answer to a question above the table? So the different categories, because I can cover one of this one, are little, what is a mass private unapproved? What does that mean to the budget?
I don't think it means anything to the budget except that that is, it indicates who we're paying.
So the town is still?
Who we're baby paying. It really, it is.
Do you agree, Tom?
Yeah, because that's where it's not, some of these are approved by the state, and so there's a day rate that the state's on. And these are outside of that as a negotiating.
Right. And then further jurisdictions of an unapproved school, so they are not following last standard curriculum. So if we place the student there, our contract may look different in terms of access. So for our unapproved schools, we often seek approval from the state for a circuit breaker reenforcement, which is separate paperwork. So if let's do, if the spending is over the threshold, then we would put in what they used to call the sole source paperwork, which is a way to recoup some of that money even from unapproved school. So unapproved means that they haven't gone through that jurisdiction on rate setting through the state or from other aspects of supervision and oversight.
Well, that's why we require them to be stated.
That's correct. Right.
I mean, that's what unapproved is, the tuition is the same, it's not standardized.
It's not standardized, but it's not necessarily higher. It's just a program. Right, right. So to become an approved program, they have to submit, you know, the number of staff and the kinds of programs, and then the rate, the state takes all of that information and sorts it into what they believe is a day rate. And so, you know, the schools are still posting publicly their tuition rates, the unapproved schools are still posting their tuition rates, and we're still entering into contract around that. So it doesn't feel like, oh, it's $10,000, nobody's higher than we expected, or something like that. It's still a designated.
I had a question about the strategic learning center at Chikrin.
Are students at Pine Hill are educated in similar ways to students at Chikrin, but their pull-out services happen here at our resource room level or through more inclusion? But this, the level of need for the students, I think we see similar needs, but it's just programmatically and structurally, it's been supported differently. So it's one of the very interesting differences that I think Andrew and I kind of look at and say, okay. And for both buildings, it seems to run very successfully to not have a strategic learning center at Pine Hill and very successfully to have a strategic learning center at Chikrin. Interesting pieces of culture here.
So would it ever be the kind of thing where we had those students that we felt would benefit more from that program, and they go there and it's really?
I think in that particular, in that particular realm of student, you're probably less likely to send those states sponsor or vice versa, because they're going to be in a mere general setting as much as possible. So it would be less, it's just in that, in some of our programs, I think, something we should, I think, we continue to explore or explore a little deeper. That's going to be advantages of being written, neutralized all the way up, because if you can do that or not, but that doesn't mean we can't have those conversations. But for this particular program, I don't think, from a, I don't think that's a direction we want to go. I actually think what we're doing here is more in alignment with the least restricted environment law. You know, the goal should be for us to have the kids in the general setting as much as possible. But everyone comes at that different point of view. You see that in any school system, it's just a little different highlight we're doing here. And I think if we continue cross pollination with Chikrin, I don't know if it stands to gain new ideas as to this Chikrin. I think that's a program that's in place and that they're accustomed to, but it doesn't mean we didn't look at that. That's a whole other road. I don't think it's been an area of huge, and Pine Hill.
And I think we're just a little bit smaller in scale, so if this classroom magically appeared tomorrow... appeared tomorrow, I don't know that we would have a cohort of students for it at this time.
And you can kind of tell that via our eligibility, how it is too. And so it's just, it's very interesting. And though, I will caution though, the SLC at Chikara is not a placement. So those children are, it is a full inclusion program. So they are connected to their inclusion room classroom. They are full members of that class, so it's not like a separate full room. And then they receive services out of the classroom, which is similar to what students at Pine Hill do. It's just not staffed in the same kind of way.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I was just curious about that.
So I like to think of it as a service and not a program.
Right, that we're just meeting the kids.
Yep, exactly, exactly.
Thank you.
Yes, so things are going great in the state standpoint. I had so many nice opportunities to meet with people. The last year, I went to Japan, I felt deeply into a place, kind of great experience for me and really wonderful line of experience. We made the teachers last week here. Just some of the things that hopped out at me was how much aid, you know, talked about parents, support parents. Over and over, unsolicited, just we're sitting down in the lunchroom, what's working through and reading what we're doing through. And it just came up over and over, well supported by the administration in the past. And as soon as we got the teachers, they, they actually referenced the time it's been spent with Chikara and sharing professional development opportunities and how much they appreciate that. So I hope we can continue to foster that. Teachers also, they talked about, that's a lot is expected of them and the different things that's at heart. Whatever teachers say to me, it would be nice if we had your time and everything. And that is, more than one teacher made that comment. So that suggests to me that we do ask a lot of them. I thought they were just incredibly professional and insightful in their comments to me and seriousness with which they made their goal. It's not just a place to show up to work, perhaps they have a passion, they're doing some best interest of kids, and that really came off as conversations. They like being assisted on spend, which I would just talk about, and feel that we should continue to focus on those kinds of opportunities on something that our parents as well. And continue to strengthen and diversify our community professionally well. Continue to look for ways to kind of lead teachers where they're at, just as we do with the students. So feedback from that many of those factors. The new parents, similar, great ideas, a lot of interesting, continuing to emphasize civics, perhaps based on what's going on in our country at the time, I guess, kind of to feel like maybe to just add as much energy as we can on going back to this, that's important principle of civics and what is it mean to civic minded. And I know that that's still very much a message that's delivered here because I've seen it over and over with my own children at Friday meeting and Friday morning meetings. There's always a heavy emphasis on civics, which I think is awesome. But I think people really appreciate that. That was one of the highlights for parents, how much, including parents at the middle and high school level are still coming out and saying how much they appreciate it in these Friday morning meetings and how much it can impact us and kids. Goodness to you Barbara and to your staff. Putting the time into do that might have been easier to just not have Friday morning meetings. It's work, but the kids get so much out of it and what they, the referencing, they come out to referencing how kids are all different blocks, who sometimes have their arms around each other and swing to a certain song in their seat, but how connected they are as a body, which I think is something that's really important to parents. It's resonating a lot, people really worried about kids in general and their social emotional well-being and kind of the impact of social media, these careers in their hands. So a lot of people emphasize how important this thing is to parents. The, I'm not going to go into the meetings because I've spoken about that quite a bit in the recent weeks. The visit with our Boston community members, it's really fabulous. That too is something that I think is really important to parents, that I speak to. We ask, I do everything in my power to continue to support our MECO program. Our students in color who may not be in MECO, so that we are consistently, constantly emphasizing the importance of our fellow students having a seat in this special community, so every family. So we are continuing to keep that focus and make sure that people know that this isn't just talk, we truly believe it. To that end, we had some wonderful professional development that, that Ms. Paul McCoy and Lee Deal set up our MECO director, he set up a training with, with Ms. Warren, came in and did some work on cultural responsiveness, which Barbara talked about in her report. It was a fabulous opportunity for our leadership team, we were all there, and it's kind of for us to talk about some of the challenges that our students face and all of our students that are in studies. And so we want to keep that a part of our thinking and we want to thank that, what we did want to get that set up. And finally, the, I want to mention that we have the donation from Union Bank. For James donation $5,000 to support our MECO program. It's a wonderful ceremony held in Union and it was wonderful to be with other school leaders, any of whom I know, who are there receiving the same kind of donation. I think we felt supported by each other, you know, it was so inspiring to support MECO. So I want to thank you Union Bank for their donation and especially our boss for his kind words out there. So that is essentially my report. I will speak to the rolling in a few minutes. That's it, Bill.
Is there anything else we need to know about the subcommittee that was formed?
Oh yes, the PNC subcommittee. The PNC is the only of the contract, teachers contract that includes some actual curricular activities. It's predominantly high school and middle school centered, but there are some that follow into the realm of elementary and they'll go at Pine Hill. And it isn't very lucid, it's the home of rep, that unit. And really, it's just a process of going through the PNC as a joint body. If there's anything that's no longer relevant, or perhaps is relevant, it means to take place sometimes. All the times we do organize things, we're going up hoping that someday it'll legitimize the PNC list. So that conversation did take place, actually, we had the first meeting around the 16th. I wanted to look very closely at that PNC, just make sure they're doing things properly and trying to find that any person who can participate in this. That's, that's the, sorry, just, I'm just a guy.
So in the fact that you have the style of some preparations as a subcommittee, reflected in your statement, budget column is taking the reserve that we have for contract settlement and spreading it into the various salary line items based on who was budgeting. So we didn't take into account any staffing changes or spreading salary increases. By doing that, there's still a few things to tweak that go to shared conditions, but everything is spread out for about $3,000. But right now I have it sitting up in the teacher room, so that it wasn't sitting down there. It's budgeting to keep it up in salaries, and that may spread a little bit more when you see your PNC. But basically, we settled all the contracts that we'll be budgeting, which is a little bit different. And I will also say, because we still have, and you'll notice there's a lot of areas of university pretenses, of IT, that's all central office expenses that we have to do off a big purchase return that we put into budget system to charge all that back out to go there and show that's what we're using this month. So those numbers will be reflected in there after our very first date. And that'll give you a little tour in your nearby stadium, and I'll do the variance on salaries at that minute. And that way, everything will be different. But you can take a peek a little bit, and I've been able to, but you know, that we will be walking into the year with a positive salary variance, varying of our additional changes during the year, but that's always a good thing too. We have, we have two, two agreed post-budget staffing changes. And two of them are favorable, one of them costs a little bit more, so we'll probably explain all that. And on operating expenditures, it still is really early too. We've incurred a few things, we've been taking out transportation, some of our facilities, we haven't done, yeah, so. And so we can sort of get a feel a little bit, but as you know, there's still a lot sitting there left in unused budget, which by next month, a little bit more than I'll be in covered, but this is usually where you will have the monthly expenses that are always going to be in covered, you know, for daily activities. We'll get to a better feel of that as we move along. But there is nothing, at this point, that causes an alarm, as I said before. On the out of district tuition and transportation, Chris provided you with some of the data. I will say that we went into the budget with 18 placements. We're sitting right now with 18 placements, but they're not the same 18 placements, so there has been comings and goings, changes in where students are. But we're looking at a, and you can't, there's one or two tuitions that have not been in covered yet, but our best guess right now, if we stop today and know the changes were made, there are about $40,000 surplus. So the changes that happened during the year were too good for us, which is great news after last year, where I can't remember if anyone was doing this today, it's bad for you. So we'll keep a monthly updating that for you. And as you've noticed at the bottom, where it's a total size, the piece that's charged to circuit breaker, and remember the funded part of your budget with the non-resident tuition, that is sitting down in that, so the budget $218,932, this is what we've spent so far, which shows you the cover's in. We still have some money left that hasn't been spent in that arena. It's predominantly the $20,000 non-resident tuition that we'll just hold on to and see how we can do it as the budget here progresses. But we do have a couple of little pockets of safety this year that we didn't have last year and have been kept, remember from your June 30th revolving funds report, we kept a little bit of circuit breaker, but we didn't end up using any of the non-resident tuition from last year. So we've got that sitting there along with the tuition number this year. And then we did note that the circuit breaker reimbursement rate was released to be 65% this year, which is a little bit lower than we've seen in previous years. Remember, we viewed budget at 6%. So it gives you a smaller cushion, but you still watch $20,000 left from that.
It's been 70?
It's been 70, and we actually ended up getting 73% last year. My guess is that Chris and I have discussed this, that underwater claims went up. My guess is a lot of claims went up, and so it wasn't that they allocated a budget lots of circuit breaker, it's just that more people needed to use it for whatever they put in.
As you, I don't know how, if you kind of mentioned that with Chris, the fact that you are now looking at our services in this as well, reflection of circuit breaker, I think all districts are looking more closely at that. These students are eligible for circuit breaker reimbursement. It might not be a block money, like when all the systems across the state start doing that, and they are, yeah.
Three questions on the staff preparations. And then I'd give you just a small snapshot on again, the fiscal year 18 capital projects that have, the windows, hopefully by June 30th will be all done. But the way it's set up, and our contractor's all set up, the budget is going to be projected and that's what I actually used his number for the capital request. And thus, at this time, it's now coming in, that's the way he thought, so that we should have a zero there until we're all finished. Exterior painting, the budget was 29,440, can't change it to 500, so a little bit there. And the auditorium, I'm still reading for the invoices for our both schools from the contractor for the AV insulation. We are not anticipating it being different than what we budgeted, but I'd rather actually have the numbers before we record it out. And it did, we last, we talked with Barb and Javi about, because that space is used for soccer, lacrosse, and other things. It is recommended that we just put a protective cage, a wire cage around that screen so that anything that we hit, we either flung it right, around the projector, yeah. But yeah, the projections, so we're doing that and we're just going to charge it to the building rental fund because we're really doing it because groups have wrecked the facility. So that is set up, and then we'll compare the installation.
It's very close in the next speaker chair.
Okay, perfect, because they were holding up, looking for it somewhere else. And the sailing fans are here on site, our district resident electrician is, I know, is, he's got so many projects that we're having to prioritize where it's going, hopefully eventually at our company. We had hoped at this meeting to potentially have the onsite insight report presented, but we have gotten slightly delayed, but the rep is confirmed to be there on the November 14 meeting. And Scott and I will meet after the meetings tonight and schedule our reunion on the November meeting. Also, we're looking forward to your first draft of your fiscal year 19 progress.
And things coming out of that onsite insight, well, new projects coming up, sure that that will be.
It should be, it shouldn't be surprises, because they're really just taking the existing plan and updating it, but.
But we're not.
But we, yeah, exactly, yeah, it isn't anything. And we'll, we'll look at that when this is done the first time, where we've already done that for Delaware and Norwegian, and they're really more in surprise, but I think you'll like how they need to record less, much easier to handle, a budget plan process to sort of.
And how many years is that?
It goes on 20 years. So it updated, we did it five, five years ago. And they suggest that we do it five years, just sort of have it updated, one for parts and, and then two just to put the building all, you know, everywhere, it's very different song, varying times, so it's a digital update under the full life.
And our building is, the predominant part of the building is 60 years old this year. And we can't imagine a building of this age in such great shape in most communities. It's impressive.
We're very fortunate to have Peter Gimmel, who's just a fantastic head of study, so he treats this stuff as home. From my, you know, the year that I worked with him, and so I think that's part of what this place is.
He sneaks in here all week, yes, not just when he's dead, but all the time. I have found him and his children spreading mulch, not on payroll.
I get texts at home that he fed the lizard.
The lizard sent to these messages?
Probably didn't work. May I ask John, in my incorrect, there's also an outstanding item that is in the atomic blocks. Isn't that in process?
Yes, which I thought was, that was a maintenance item, so...
Okay, that's why it's not on, thank you for reacting, thank you.
You're just trying to put those in basketball weekends or something?
Yes, and we're all, we'll all be on the same time zone, which believe it or not, will make an instructional world of difference around here.
Nice question, Miss Cole. So when we're talking about the cage around the screen itself?
It's the, it's the, the screen rolls up into like this middle box. And so it's coming from, so it's just going to be like, you know, just a wired...
But is there something on the projector too?
Oh, no, no, the projector's on the other end.
We're talking about a cage for the projector, for the, the screen is already protected. Yeah, instead of the new projector, because it's on the screen.
Okay.
Oh, no, probably on the side, right. A very expensive piece of equipment, right in the row of kickball or basketball or some kind of projector.
Sometimes it'll mount those in the ceiling, but there really isn't one to mount it in. So it's probably, it's probably...
Our ceiling was too high for a drop down, they thought it would...
How would you shake it?
Shaking. So our screen we replaced probably four years ago now, and it gets protected in its case.
Are there enrollment?
Yes, so you see the 10-year enrollment history. We moved this on October 1st, as required by the state. And somewhere along the line, the state determined that that's when humans, we settled it down by October. And so that's the first snapshot we took, and we're staying with that snapshot. As I was saying, let's go through the budget process. I did kind of catch an error that I apologize for under grade three on that first chart. It's showing four sections, and it's actually three, at 21.6. Which then throws our total to 21 sections, not 22. I apologize for that. So when you look at those class sizes with your class size guideline, striving for 18 to 23 grades, K to 3, you can see where it is at. My rule of thumb is, well, what would happen if I reduced by a section or if I added by a section? Pretty basic math. So like in the case of the fourth, fifth grades, you wouldn't go to three sections. High mid ones. Could, it might fall within your range, but be good pushing it. So that's the first page, that's broken down a little differently on the second page. We're still looking at for K to 5, 397, and include 3K, 430. The 397 is consistent, I'd say, over the past 10 years. Looks like we're down a little bit, certainly from 08. But no clear pattern of a trend in up or trending down.
Student number 398 will be starting with us tomorrow morning.
Because that's...
What day?
No, not currently, they have to follow first rule.
Let's go with that.
So that's a big one, yeah.
But we, as you know, we, we intricated a much larger cohort of students to middle school that we enrolled into kindergarten.
That's probably what we checked.
And you'll see the same thing, you've read, you're at 81 people per class in kindergarten, 49 shares, so I'm starting from one projector.
In our census, as you recall, last year, we had quite a blip of kindergarteners who are now first graders. According to our census, we're stable, we're, that was not a minimal, that was a blip, according to the census, so we're, because we already looked three years out, just to see. It doesn't count, and you have, but...
Space wise, Barbara, I'm just not that familiar with it. Are you feeling like you have to handle classroom space, or are you, what's your preference at this point?
We're, we're very functional, using our space very functionally. I get asked that question a lot in town, you know, what budget they're passing, it depends on class size. It depends on the number of rooms that we use for non-classroom purpose.
So right now, it's working?
Yes, two preschools, some special education. We were able to create space for Spanish instruction, as I mentioned.
But you also had to take space from the cafeteria at one point for, is it before or after school care?
They, they still, that still is the case, yeah.
I'm just saying, that's not ideal, but ideal would be for them to probably have their own classroom.
They would, they're close to 9200 children a day, so they could use classrooms.
Right, so it's not, it's not perfect, but they're making it work.
We're making it work. And on sunny days, it works especially well.
So that's, that's probably, say, it's going by enrollment. We'll have more, as we go through the budget process, you know, more suggestions, more speculating, try to expect the best guess.
Thank you. The 19 budget, I understand Greg and Mr. Keas are opportunity to ask questions and requests.
There are things that you want us to keep an eye on, or you want to slip by all the time? Some things to, I mean, it should stay afloat, budget process, because I'm a total minder. So if you guys can help provide on this, we'd love to know if it doesn't necessarily...
We'll do it now, because you're not asking me, actually, we'll see the first question.
I have a question about the nutritionist position. I think it was in the budget, but it's just at the region, and it has not been filled. Yeah, we had a hot candidate issue. So will that just be, continues to be just at the region if they put it in? Or that's immediately the district one?
I think they're redoing the region pilots, so they're still gonna do the pilot, seeing what impact the position can have on some food service operation, and I don't know if it's more of a add before they try it, so. Janelle's been, it's been outside lately, so we should get that on.
Were there any others that were, that are open and not filled at this time, that are in our budget that like the nutritionist position?
In your existing budget, no, I think you're another, you're one of the artist's pool that's fully staffed.
Maybe have a staff member start just maybe, maybe have a couple of educational assistants. I anticipate between now and the next school meeting, we'll see a posting for long-term subs. I'm over here, I'm sure we have not one, not two, but three babies cooking here at high end school, and they're all due within a week of buying.
What's the, when you, what's the current plan for those long-term subs that are being in effect?
It depends, it depends on the staff number and their maternity plan. Each of them varies. I made them up, three months in a maximum with the rest of the school year.
Right. Do we typically post anticipation as we get closer, or do we...
Yes. And when you say typically, I think that, I mean, there's been less than a handful of babies in six years. Three at once is, is not typical.
But it is driving, first of all.
The teachers, the expecting moms are due somewhere between the summer 15 and the winter break. And each of them has a bit of a different maternity from their mom, with regard to graduation.
The only other thing I was thinking with the budgets, we'll be planning next year, obviously, for that Spanish. So I guess, you know, should plan hindsight for that, 0.5 or just 0.3?
I hope you've been engaged by my colleagues in our conversations, so.
The part of the process that you do internally is that we'll have six, Barb and Javi and go through everything, and then I think we'll just typically do a high end and low end, so that's all discussion.
The good news, like the last question said, go to our enrollment is seemingly that they're in 20 new sections, so that is that they go from recent budgets and additional sections.
Like Barb mentioned, the science, and we had $12,000 in the budget last year. That made, before, what happened this year's budget, like what happened next year's budget, is the every day on that one. And that was assuming that if now, money in your budget, that's happening for that. Right, I started with your position, right? There was one piece of that that was just like, one time. So that provides us the money.
Yeah, I think over the past couple of years, the budget's been really kind of, awareness of the numbers has greatly improved and, you know, prioritized, so it's been tightening up the numbers a lot this past couple of years. So, you know, is there any idea what guidance is going to be coming in this year? Spend as little as possible.
As always, yeah, definitely. I mean, it's not, it's not looking pretty. And what we're getting, what information we're getting, so it's going to be spread really, and really, really fit for the next fiscal year.
I have one question about headcount, because you're moving a fourth, a fifth grade of four sections. And you're rolling up the kindergarten, that's three to four sections into, so do you potentially, what would you do in that circumstance? Do you know, from a budget standpoint?
Yes, certainly, we could potentially drop a section if we thought enrollment was stable. Our, our experiences that we tend to pick up.
Right.
Students, the cohort of students tends to increase by five, seven, or 10 over the course of their K through 5 experience. Right now, our second grade going to third grade, and our third grade going to fourth grade, are, could potentially be, if they grow, I would suggest that there could be a need for four sections.
Is this...
In, you know, in, in, not an additional section of, or a shuffle.
Re-allocation, yes. So can I ask a follow-up to that on the pre-K numbers? Because I would assume that the 33 is not our entire pre-K population that exists in Sherburne, that there are plenty of kids that are going to private pre-K.
Exactly.
So that's why that number doesn't translate necessarily right.
Exactly. We only have two classrooms in preschool, and we cap how many tuition kids, students we accept.
Do we gather that information over the course of the year as we do our projections? Do we gather information from, say, A, B, C, D, or as well as our students?
In Sherburne, our, our town census is incredibly reliable. And we find that the census number holds true even if a couple families don't send their kids who are kindergarten eligible, but then others magically appear. But that number, our December 1st number from the census is usually what we can bank on within, within three to five students. Our preschool number, as you know, are some three-year-olds and some four-year-olds, so it's our 24-month range of students there.
In November, when we bring the budget forward, too, we'll also bring a summary of the grants that you have, because within your general fund, it's all operating expenses. And I think that's a nice thing, to see what other things are being paid for in school. And we were fortunate enough, based on where the, where this school lives, we were able to leave grants, as we can now, and they sort of leave. We calculated that program a little bit, so they actually got a little bit more money than we typically did. So that's another area where we can potentially play with funding and increasing what we can cover without increasing the budget budget. This year, you're using that for your university and schools.
About $12,000 is anticipated to cover our literacy income. I picture phasing that level of professional development out this year. In that we are sustainable, we're growing our capacity, so there'll be an opportunity to talk about actualizing funds for other projects. So all the exact, I don't think we had any back in the start of the...
I'm not going to do the budget, totally new sale. All right, thank you. That brings us to the consent agenda, if you will, the September 12 minutes. We can just sort of go. Okay.
Want us to approve?
To approve, September 12 minutes, second.
We can approve September.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
You do it right.
So, yeah.
Can you ensure there's people work for the...
I was gonna say, I don't see that there will work for that. But yeah, we need to, we're less accepted at the, at the region level, but it covers all, right, districts. So just, you know...
Something's not formally be accepted.
So aside from the letter stack?
It's part of the...
Motion to approve. Including the MECO.
Yes.
Okay. Like, make a motion to approve the September minutes, the consent agenda, and the MECO agreement.
So, like, so Amy, I'm gonna have to have it.
Okay.
Yeah, she's got it, too.
Thanks, Amy. Any discussion? All in favor? Items for the November meeting. Oh, sorry, I'm really excited. All right. But we don't need to...
Just acknowledge the minutes for what regional school committee can do.
So, any of your comments?
Should have those.
Yours. And you?
And you.
And now. The CSA, yes.
The next grade.
Greg had requested a general breakdown of how much time students spend in different subjects during the day. But that's a new one.
That's, it's something I have at my fingertips.
Okay, great.
I'm pretty sure we've shared it in the past, and I'm happy to call it our instructional and your finger shovels.
Okay.
I'm happy to share that.
You also mentioned that it will likely be our first, first budget mess.
Capital, so, yeah.
Capital, so.
Yeah, mass. Let me turn around. Right, so I think it usually shows up, but we usually see it in the number as a school name, but this year a little different for the presentation we do.
Right, and it may make more sense based on the other items that we are having on the budget, yeah, and have on site, I guess, I mean, I would say the twenty-minute, ten to twenty-one, I'm just remembering our budget.
We can do a quick highlight at the end, and highlight, and then we'll do a full report in December. Assuming the state can. Is it correct that there's going to be a large challenge to assess executive report information available to share at the November assembly?
December.
Okay.
December, I can take their, excepting either executive report, questionnaire, done.
So maybe at that time we can share some highlights of happening in buildings, so that's December.
So it's a, I'm not sure, honestly, you'd say.
I'm struck yet.
The instruction.
Right, your question.
Hold on, negotiables, and discussion on negotiables.
That's what we cover internally, that's a, that's our part of the coverage.
I think you might also like to see, so that's going to be the components, the actual,
you know, first bell, and then school lets out, so then they have, you know, kind of the movement, or the scheduled movement through the day, because I think you have periods for most part, or general time, time blocks, so, I would say those are, you're going to be flexible with any class, but at some point you still have like ten AM is going to be the, for example, could be a specials, or move to gym class or something, so you might want to see, we'll also let that movement throughout the day, too.
Like an example of one, does every class?
That's right, so I, I'm trying to anticipate what the request might be and where maybe.
Yeah, you can ask them. And I could do a sample, so my grade level, just, our instructional blocks are varied.
Right.
From forty to sixty minutes, depending on the subject and depending on the grade level.
Right, right, so there's a lot of.
But I can do a mom.
Easy question to answer.
Right, because in the road's well, very different.
Right, right. It's not right. We'll, we'll get quick.
And then when the assistant superintendent schedules a walk-through with the principal, and we hit every classroom at approximately quarter of ten, HBC's great, we were doing a walk-through with a lens of reading and writing in mind, and we saw pretty much every classroom engaged in math or smack, even if I had my special, the diaphragm, I can stand in for that places, like one.
Very math and smack.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Someone, someone.
Second. Do you want to get a little beer?